Good morning, welcome to the public hearing, public meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson. Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Jefferson is muted.
Muted.
Commissioner Jefferson. You can mute yourself.
He's still muted.
Okay. Alright, he's here.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay. All set.
Great, thank you, and welcome everyone to the May 5th Public Hearing and Public Meeting. And this hearing is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on YouTube. So, members of the public who wish to testify must follow on YouTube and call in or enter the meeting when the item you'd like to speak on is being presented. And, once you enter or call into the meeting, you will not actually be in the meeting yet, and that's, and you won't be able to hear anything. So that's why it's important that you follow along on YouTube. When we are ready to take testimony, we will admit you into the meeting. And at that point, you'll be in the meeting, you'll be able to hear the proceedings and the people, so that we don't have feedback, at that point, you should also turn your YouTube off or turn the volume to mute. Another word about testimony, we encourage speakers to sign in and to submit written testimony in advance. We have forms for both of those steps on our website. And any testimony we receive by the close of business on Fridays before a hearing will be forwarded to the commissioners for review before the, prior to the hearing. So that's just a note about the public's participation in our process. And with that, I'll turn it to Cory to start our agenda.
Thanks Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We're going to start today's Preservation Department Agenda with a public meeting item. This is item number one, LPC 19-37705. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Queens, block 8064, lot 87. 15 Center Drive in the Douglasston Historic District. Tudor cottage style house built circa 1920. The application is to replace windows and construct a rear yard addition. This was read into the record at last week's hearing, April 28th, 2020, but it was not presented at that time. So this is the first time you're seeing it today.
And Commissioners, the applicant have entered the meeting. And please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Victor A. Falletti, from TF Cusinelli and Falletti Architects.
Okay, please go ahead, Mr. Falletti.
Okay. So, we're here to present an addition to a one-family Tudor cottage at 15 Center Drive. The owner has recently purchased the house. He actually lives across the street and is going to maintain the house that he's in now for his children and move across the street so he can be close to his family and his wife. The owner would like a larger kitchen in the house. And we proposed a rear addition for the enlarged kitchen. It's approximately the same size as an existing deck on the house right now. And the owner would also like to replace all of the windows on the house. They are not original to the structure. They were replaced maybe 15, 20 years ago. They're just vinyl clad windows. They're in very poor shape, most of them. And so we also plan on replacing all of the windows on the house. Along with enlarging the kitchen, we are also adding a deck similar to the size they have now, pushing the deck further into the rear yard adjacent to the kitchen addition. See if I can get control here. Okay. Okay. So the first page shows the front of the house. A rendering of the front of the house with the replacement windows. And the second rendering shows the addition highlighted at the rear of the dwelling along with the new wood deck. The second page is a photograph of the existing house as it is currently. And the second photograph is a highlighted area showing the area of the proposed addition. A 2.2, two more photos of the existing dwelling on the left side and the right side of the house. It's all cement stucco finish and asphalt shingle roof. Two historical photos that we were able to find. One from the 1980s, which is fairly consistent with the way it looks right now. And another photo from the 1940s, although obscured and black and white. That one does show the, it appears to show the original windows of the house. Massing wise, no real changes have been made. A 3.1 is, we're here in the next couple of slides. We're trying to show any possible views of the addition from around the property. The property is an, is an infill lot, and it is adjacent to two other dwellings. And there's one dwelling to the rear before you are on Cedar Lane. So there is some area where potentially you could see this addition from a center lane and definitely from some of the adjacent properties. So this one shows it from the corner of Forest Road and Cedar Lane. It's very, very overgrown. There's a lot of coverage, you would not be able to see the addition from either of these views. The next photo going down Cedar Lane shows a little bit, you can start to see a little bit of the house, but again, during the growing season, when the leaves are on the trees, and again, it's pretty obscured. Very difficult to see the addition from Cedar Lane. Okay. Next photo, as you get closer to the dwelling directly opposite our dwelling here, you can see the house. You can, we've enlarged a small area here showing where the addition would go. And you would, from this vantage point, have a view of the addition onto the house. The next page is showing a mock-up of where the addition would be. Mainly, really a good perspective is basically taking up the area exactly, almost exactly of the existing deck. That's where the area of the addition would be. And then the new deck would just be pretty much the same deck they have now, just pushed further into the rear yard. Next photo shows, I'm sorry, next drawing shows the plot plan and a block, a figure ground drawing showing the density of the lot coverage throughout our area. And there are two plot plans, one showing the existing plot plan as it is now. And then the proposed plot plan showing the addition on the house as well as the new wood deck. Proposed front elevation and existing front elevation of the house. Again, mainly the, the existing windows are being replaced. We would repair and refinish some of the existing stucco throughout. The color and finish would be maintained and match what is existing.
Mr. Falletti, before you leave the windows, can I just ask a question? So the, his existing windows are replacement windows. Can you tell in those grainy tax photos what the original windows were? And what exactly are you proposing in terms of material and configuration?
Okay, I could not tell from the grainy photos what, what the existing windows were. The only thing I, the owner is familiar with the house. And, and I did go there and see the existing windows. The diamond grills on the first floor windows at the front of the house do not look to be original grills for the house. They're the only windows on the entire house that have the diamond grills. And they're just simple plastic, you know, the plastic snap-on grills onto the windows. So, the owner didn't like them, it wasn't anywhere else on the house. So, we've not, we're not proposing the diamond grills on the windows.
Okay, can you just go to one slide back to A5? Okay, so are you, you're proposing double hung windows? And are they aluminum clad wood, or are they wood?
Aluminum clad wood, double hung. There are also some casements that we're proposing as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Proposed rear and existing rear elevation showing the addition that we are proposing. We've, we've tried to maintain the addition looking very similar to other elements on the house in terms of trim and in terms of roof style. Again, the deck would be also moved back towards the rear of the property. It would also enlarge their garage that they have now, which currently is almost impossible to put a car in. So now the garage would be enlarged the same dimension as the addition and make the garage usable for the owners. There is a glass sunroom on the house now that the owner would like to maintain. And we are just simply going to rebuild it in exactly the same form and material that it is right now. Only, I mean, the owner does like it, only it's in disrepair and leaking. They would just like to have it, but have it be new. Left elevation and existing, whoops. Left elevation and existing left elevation showing the area of the addition and the enlarged wood deck. There again, the exterior of the house is going to be restuccoed, refinished, same color as existing. There is an existing wall AC that will be removed. The wall will be filled and made to match the existing stucco on the house. There's the cellar, proposed cellar plan and proposed first floor plan showing the area of the garage being enlarged. And on the right is the enlarged kitchen with the new wood deck being built out towards the rear yard. There are also some interior partitions being removed to open up the kitchen to the dining room. And also make it the flow into, in and out of the basement, a little bit, a little bit more open. No impact on the exterior of the house. Second floor attic and roof. There are some new, there is a new bathroom being put in, in the attic and a new laundry room. No effect on the exterior of the house, some work being done in the master bedroom as well. And we showed some details of the windows, and it is aluminum clad wood windows. And that's the last sheet of the presentation. So again, we've tried to maintain consistency with the house that's there now. Making the addition hopefully look like something that was always there. While also providing the owner the enlarged kitchen that they wanted. Something that it'll be accommodating to them for many years. As this seems to be a place where they're going to be for quite a, quite a long time. Again, their children will be moving into the house that they currently own across the street. So hopefully this will be a good situation for them.
Thank you, Miss, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? If you have a question, please raise your hand. Okay, Commissioner Bland, please go ahead.
Yes, on that, let me remove this now. On, on the very slide that's up there now, what, what's the purpose of that little? I don't know if you want to call it a dormer or whatever it is, little roof element that pops up above the windows in the kitchen, what's, what's the purpose of that?
In, in, in the kitchen, they actually would have a small cathedral ceiling just to give the kitchen a little bit more volume. The ceilings are quite low in the house. And we thought a small cathedral ceiling above the kitchen windows would be something to give it a little bit more volume. Once the room gets very long, the low ceiling starts to make it feel a little bit low inside. So we wanted to gain a little bit of volume.
I asked the question because it seems an anomalous angle compared to all the rest of the roof elements in the house. And therefore, kind of calls attention to itself as something out of place. But we can do that in comments, I just wanted, wanted to understand it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. And are there any other questions? At this time? Okay. So, I don't see any questions, and we'll turn to public testimony. And I think we have to, we have one more sort of housekeeping business. This was technically a public meeting item because it was read into the record last Tuesday. So I need to make a motion to open the proceedings. So, Commissioner Shamir Baron, will you make a motion to open the proceedings? Okay, and I'm just unmuting everybody so we can call the vote. Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you all. So Lisa, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
Yes, we do, we have one person who is here to speak on this. Kelly Carroll. Hi Kelly.
Can you hear me?
Hi.
Yes.
You have three minutes. Yes, we can.
Great, this is Kelly Carroll for Historic Districts Council. The window replacement on the left side of the house should be modified to be three middle casements flanked by two casements. And each window should be of the same size and proportion. The drawings state that the new windows will be Andersons, but we were unable to determine the materiality of the proposed windows and would like clarification. We just heard that they will be clad wood. Finally, the new window sashes should not be white. They should be historically accurate darker color to move this facade in the correct direction. Regarding the rear yard addition, the gable over the windows on the rear yard should be eliminated. This roof should be one continuous shed roof to allow the raked gables of the existing house to predominate. The railing of the rear deck replicates the existing condition of the colonial-style balusters, which should also be eliminated and constructed as simplified square posts, which is much more in keeping with the style of this house, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. We have one more person in the waiting room. And I'm not sure if they're here for this item, but I think I need to bring them in. Hello, Julia H.'s iPad. Can you hear me? Okay. We'll put them back in the waiting room, and I think that's it for the testimony.
Okay, thank you. Rich, do we have a resolution from the community board or any other written testimony?
Yes, we have one other letter in opposition and a community board letter recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Falletti, would you like to respond to the comments? Particularly the configuration of the windows and the finish of the windows? And then also the details of the rear yard addition?
Sure, the, I, I, it went a little fast, I didn't get the, she mentioned the specific windows, that, that configuration, I thought she said left side, or was it right? I, I missed that, I'm writing it down as you're speaking, but.
Yeah, can we go back to maybe A5? The drawing A5, which shows the windows?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
To the front.
Yeah, so I believe the testimony was about the top three windows, recommending the top three windows in that bay B casement. And that all of the windows have similar proportions in terms of their pane size. And then the white finish was also raised.
Oh, the, the three, the three windows in the, in the bay, in that projection?
Yeah.
Okay, they'd be casements, okay, got it. Casements and then the mullions be in the same proportion as some of the other.
For all of the windows, the comment was that mullions should be the same proportion, muttons.
No muttons, yes, not a problem. And the darker color for the, for the, for the, for the window frames, as I was, you know, recently looking at this, and I saw that old photo, I would definitely suggest that to the owners, yes.
Okay, so are you saying that you would follow that recommendation made by the Historic District Council?
Yes, I would, I would follow that recommendation. And the, the balusters for the deck, I agree, we will, we will make those more traditional balusters for this type of a house. I agree with that recommendation as well. And I, and again, I wrote down roof, I think, I think she meant that roof, that gable roof on that rear addition. I, I'll recommend that to the owner and and see if maybe we could just cathedral the ceiling in one direction.
Okay, alright, Commissioners, do we have any other questions at this time? No, okay. So let us move to our discussion. And Mark, I just opened the proceeding, so I don't need to technically close the hearing, do I?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, so we'll go straight to discussion. And Commissioner Bland, would you like?
Actually, Sarah, Sarah, no, you shouldn't, you open the proceedings, you, it's actually, because it's read in the record, you should close the hearing.
Okay, so, alright, so Commissioner Holford Smith, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, and I'm just unmuting everybody again. So we can all vote on that. Okay. All in favor of closing the hearing? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so now we're going to move to our discussion. And Commissioner Bland, since you had a comment, would you like to start this discussion?
Sure. I think the testimony sort of hit all the, the points. And I think if I just heard correctly, the applicant has exceeded to all the points. Including the windows, the color, the size of the muttons, the balusters on the rail, and the elimination of the gable in the end at the, at the rear, so I'm fine with this.
Great. And Commissioner Lutfi, do you have?
Yeah. First of all, I want to commend the, the applicant for their, you know, for their, not only their willingness to be flexible, but really from the outset, from doing everything they could to make the addition as harmonious as possible with the house. And also for making it as minimally visible as possible. So.
Great, okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree with my fellow Commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
I, I agree as well, and I second Commissioner Lutfi's comment. It is nice to see a design that is truly tightly based upon need and, and not overstepping. And, and I think with the changes that were very willingly accepted, I'm fine with it.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I agree with those comments.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree.
Okay, it sounds like we have a consensus here. Is anyone who disagrees or would like to add in a different comment? Please raise your hand. Okay, Commissioner Devonshire, please.
Just one other thing I would add.
Oh, excuse me, go ahead. Wait, you're muted. I can't unmute him for some reason. Okay, I think you're good to go. Can you repeat that? We're on mute.
No, I'm not going to repeat that, come on.
Oh, please do.
On the, on the front facade gable end in the attic, there is now a one-over-one sash. And I, and I think in the earlier photographs, it looks like divided lights. The one-over-one looks really sort of odd to me compared to all the other divided lights on the facade.
So I think, yeah, I think that when we ask the staff to work with the applicant to refine the configuration and proportion of the panes, that window will fall into that, that reworking.
Great, otherwise I agree with my other Commissioners about the approach now.
Okay, great. So I think I'll go ahead and make this motion, and I can add some of these changes. And, and then we'll take a vote, and I think we'll be there, okay? So, this is a application for a certificate of appropriateness in Queens. Docket number LPC 19-37705. 15 Center Drive in the Douglasston Historic District. A Tudor cottage style house built circa 1920. This is an application to replace windows and construct a rear yard addition. And I note that the style, building style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Douglasston Historic District. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the change in operation from casement, scratch that, that the new windows will closely match the configuration proportions and details of the historic windows. And will, the change in material will be minimally perceptible and in keeping with the buildings of this age and style. That the change in detail from the diamond pattern muttons to the square muttons at the windows at the first floor of the east facade will unify the windows throughout this house and will be in keeping with historic window details at buildings of this age type and style. That the rear yard addition will be minimally visible from public thoroughfares in the context of taller secondary facades and other rear yard accretions, and will be obscured by mature trees. That the construction of the addition will not eliminate any significant architectural or landscape features. That the addition will not result in the house covering more than 30% of the lot. That the addition will be lower in height than the historic house, thereby helping it to be subordinate to the house and in keeping with additions historically added to houses of this type, style and age, which frequently feature an asymmetrical composition. That the stucco cladding fenestration pattern and sloped roof of the addition will closely replicate the design details and finishes of the historic house, therefore help, thereby helping to support a harmonious relationship between the house and the addition. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the building or the streetscape. However, I find that the windows in the bay do not recall the original casement configuration. That the windows throughout the house should be studied in consultation with the staff to, to determine a size and proportions of the muttons that will be unifiedly applied throughout the facade. That the details at the deck be revised in consultation with the staff, refined in consultation with the staff, and that the gable be eliminated at the rear yard addition. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion? And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes, second. Okay, Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron? Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, 11 in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Rich. And one last thing, I think we also agreed that they should work with the staff to, um, identify a, a proposed color that's more in keeping with the age and style of the building. Okay.
All right, we're going to, uh, move now to the Preservation Department Public Hearing Items. The first is item number one, LPC 20-08403, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 214, lot 25, 11 Cranberry Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in 1836. The application is to alter the rear facade.
Thank you, commissioners. The applicant has joined the meeting. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin. Jane Sax, you may begin.
Hi, am I in control of this screen, Brian?
Yes, you can just click on the screen that you see before you, and then use your arrow keys to advance through the slides.
It's not moving. Oh, so I'm sorry, it is. Okay. Should I be starting?
Yes, please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Hi, my name is Jane Sax. I'm a principal at HS2 Architecture, and this is for the public hearing for 11 Cranberry Street. Okay, so now, okay, um, the first thing that I wanted to say was to, um, just sort of talk about where we are in this process. Uh, the house was built in 19, in 1836, and, um, throughout the, throughout our, our work in terms of the renovation and restoration of the house, we worked very closely with landmarks. And pretty much initially, everything that we did was approved at staff level. What you're seeing here on this, um, particular page is the location, the Sanborn map, the tax map, the existing front elevation and the rear elevation. The front elevation has all been gone through and approved at staff level, and really, this application is just for the basement and parlor floor at the rear elevation. Sorry, this mouse jumps. Okay. This map, uh, this page is really, once again, we were trying to date the, um, small addition that's at the rear of the building. It shows you, the first map that we found in the public library is 1887, and then you see it up to 1916. Um, what we saw on here is that there is the existence of the, um, addition. We don't see any drawing for the Oriole, and if you look at the back where the park was, um, here, the Orioles were drawn in. We're not sure when the Oriole came in. These were the maps that, you know, between us and LPC, these were the maps that we could find. Um, sorry. So, uh, what happened then is we've done, as we were filing the drawings, we then found these drawings on Microfiche. This is from 1960, and it is at this point that we see the, um, the Oriole is now on the rear of the elevation. Um, and then there is another map, uh, DOB, which is from 1969. The Oriole is drawn slightly differently. Again, we're not sure why. I don't know if, if it's indicating alterations. Um, just so that the commissioners understand, what you're seeing in the 1969 drawing is not the way it is now because the little deck that goes off the back is a slightly larger deck, and it's not exactly this either. Um, the next few pages that I'm going to run through are really to show you what we were looking to do, and it's really the, uh, the zoning application for the additional FAR to the DOB. So what we are looking to do was here, was to add this little pop-out of 22 inches and to create a two-story bay window from the basement to the parlor floor. You'll notice that the yard is still going to keep a, a high yard and a low yard, so it, part of it will be hidden by, because it's four feet down from the upper yard. And then basically, um, again, this is showing you the removal of the Oriole, the addition. And all of this was really for our application to DOB for the zoning, which has been approved. Um, this page is really to show you the rear of the building as it exists now. Um, what it is articulating is the proposed demolition. We are proposing to demolish the existing Oriole, and we are going to take out the windows above and below, and we're going to insert the new bay window that projects 22 inches beyond the building facade. Sorry. Again, so this part is really what we're doing is looking at the Oriole. When we were working with, um, Jared and Brian, their big concern was this Oriole, the, um, so we were trying to find out how old the Oriole, because we cannot find any drawings that dated. What we did is we did some penetrations to see what the construction might be. Um, the thing I would like everyone to notice here is that you can see that currently the Oriole is, um, it's, you know, the outside skin is stucco. There is very little architectural detailing that's left. It's all supported on this sort of lolly column here. So when we were there, because at one point Brian and Jared came with us to take a look at our endeavor to assess the age of the Oriole, and the assessment was that probably the Oriole was there, and probably originally the Oriole was a window, oops, I'm so sorry. Probably the Oriole was a window, and at that point, early on, you would go to the garden from the basement, which was probably the cooking kitchen. Um, so while there, we all pretty much agreed that this Oriole has been altered. It has been altered significantly on the exterior, and any historical detailing that might have been is not really there anymore. And it was of all of our opinion, there wasn't really anything that we were keeping, and it's in pretty bad shape. So what we are looking to do, and what you can see here, um, on this slide, is what was initially approved by landmarks on the bottom was we were keeping the Oriole and the two windows. What we're asking for now is to remove the Oriole, replace it with two French doors, put in a smaller steel deck and stair, and to do the pop-out of the steel and glass bay window that comes out one foot, 10 inches beyond the building. Uh, this is a drawing of the rear of the elevation. Again, what we're trying to do is to clarify for you what was approved at staff level and what we're asking to do now. To the left is what was approved at staff level, again, maintaining the windows, doing one large opening in the basement. What we're looking to do now is to remove the Oriole, put in a set of French doors at the basement, at the parlor floor, and then to insert this double-story bay window that would be made out of steel and glass. The, basically, all of the masonry work at the third floor is just basically restored and left as is. Um, what I'm doing here is taking you through a section so you can begin to see how that bay window is projecting. That is the little steel deck that will come down and will land on the upper part of the garden, and then we'll have garden steps that will then take you down to the lower level, to the parlor floor. What we're doing here is showing you a plan section so that you can begin to see, um, the sizing of the lights, the sizing of the mutton mullions, and we've really tried in how we looked at the fenestration for the rear of this elevation, that it recalls the fenestration of the above. Um, this is a plan section detail, no, sorry, this is a section detail in which we are showing you the, um, the top above the parlor floor, and then the, um, spandrel panel between the floors, in which we would probably keep, again, a steel section. I'm sorry, I think I kind of rushed, sorry. Um, I think I kind of rushed over the back elevation. Should I go back to that for you so you can see that? Or do you have that in your mind? You're okay? Okay, okay, sorry.
Yes, we're okay.
Okay, my control is, on this mouse is not that great. So the next few elevations are taking you for photos from the back and really showing you, um, this is, you know, in February where there's very little foliage, then we have one in August. These are from the street, so you can, you know, you can really barely see my building, which is kind of back in here and here. Um, this is again taking you, I'm still back at the street. Um, and then there was a request that we go into, oops, I'm so sorry. Brian? Oh, here. Then, then there was a request that we go into the yard to take a look and see. Again, there is very minimal visibility. This is my building here. This is when there was some of the mock-up, the orange netting. So I'm back in here. And back in here. Um, so really, for this, what my client is asking is that there can be a change to the original approval, and that what we are asking is that the Oriole can be removed, replaced by French doors, and that we can put in this additional steel and glass two-story bay window that will project 22 inches beyond the, uh, addition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? All right. Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
Um, just, just one question. On the reading of the facade, um, it looks like it's a two-story window system you're putting in. It looks like two stories, but my reading of this section is that there's, um, it's not a two-story space. Am I correct?
No, it's not a two-story space. It's, you know, there's a floor plate that comes through, and it's met by that steel spandrel panel.
Thank you.
There is, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Please raise your hand if you have a question. All right, not seeing any questions, we will move to public testimony. Lisa, is there anyone who is here to speak?
Yes, we have two people sign up to speak. I'm going to start with admitting Judy Stanton. Judy? Can you hear me? Okay, Judy Stanton? Okay, Judy, oh, here we go. Judy, I've unmuted you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, Judy, could you, yes, we can. Can you please state your name for the record in your three minutes?
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We do not support the application. We believe the earlier plan, already approved by the staff, is far preferable. The rear facade from the first story upward is highly visible, both from inside Harry Chapin Playground as well as from Columbia Heights and Minogue Street outside the park. You can see the visibility in the photos we've attached to this testimony. Visibility is also evident by looking at the block diagram. We think the rear counts as a primary facade because the adjacent park, created after the completion of the BQE underpass and open up for district designation, is a public thoroughfare. The rear extension at the first story, except for the Oriole, is dated to the 1855 fire insurance map and is probably original to the house's 1836 construction. Therefore, the two extant first-story window openings on the rear are historic. It would be highly inappropriate to modify the unaltered window openings on this visible facade. Merging those two openings into one giant new bay window and changing the materiality from wood to steel would be incongruous with the rest of the facade. The inclusion of side lights in the bay window is also inappropriate and intrudes on the balance between public and private rowhouse rears. Regarding the Oriole, we believe that the applicant should follow the plan that was already approved to rebuild the Oriole rather than remove it. The Oriole is a pre-designation addition that complements the rest of the rear facade. Nothing is wrong with its design, just its maintenance. If the Oriole must be removed, then any new opening at that location should be no larger than the scale of the Oriole and should match wood material and style of the historic windows on the facade, not steel. Given the visibility of this rear facade, any alteration should be considered with no less caution than would be rears of the houses in our district that face the promenade. Those rear views offer the opportunity to appreciate the less formal aspects of period architecture in a way that can be just as enriching as seeing the front facades. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And next, um, person that signed up is Kelly Carroll. And. Hi, Kelly, can you hear me?
This is Kelly Carroll for Historic District Council. While HDC prefers the previously approved rear yard addition, which featured the bay window, the proposed rear facade would be more appropriate if a course of masonry is introduced between the garden and parlor levels of the rear facade. As proposed, the double-height glazing seems excessive for an 1836 Greek Revival rowhouse. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, we have two other people in the waiting room. Um, I'm going to call Jack NYC. Jack NYC, can you hear me? Jack NYC, you've been brought in from the waiting room? Jack NYC, last time? Okay, I'm going to put Jack back in the waiting room. Um, Ellen Katz? Ellen Katz? Ellen Katz, can you hear me? Ellen Katz, last time? Okay, um, I think that's everybody to testify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rich, do we have a resolution from the community board or any other? Rich, do we have a resolution from the community board or any other written testimony?
So the community board referred to the Brooklyn Heights Association on this particular application and then no other additional letters that were already mentioned during testimony.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Sax, would you like to respond to the testimony? There were comments about the visibility and so I think it would be helpful to clarify that, that BHA describes a visibility as, is very visible, highly visible, and, and I think you described it as minimally visible, so if we could walk through that again and then, you know, the comments on the configuration of the bay window and its scale and relationship to the historic building. Oh, you're on mute.
I'm trying to take us to the images. I can't seem to...
If you click on the screen, then you should be able to use your arrow keys to navigate.
Okay, let me try that. Okay, sorry, there we go. Okay, so this is us in the park. I mean, I think there's minimal visibility, I mean, I'm not, I mean, you can see what's here. You know, we, we were really careful in terms of trying to think about how we were going to approach this rear yard. My client really loves the house and, you know, is, we're really looking to try and enhance the house. And in terms of the two-story addition being steel and glass, it was our thought, all the windows that are in the existing, that are in the existing openings, we are going to do in wood and glass, but because this is a new insertion and we're not trying to make it look like it was always there, in a sense, we were trying to be more sort of architecturally honest about it. This is new, this is steel and glass, and this is going to punch out a little bit. I mean, part of the reason for the punch out was that we had this little bit of FAR and programmatically on the inside, it works for us to try and take advantage of this little bit of additional space. If I look at it, I think, given the stature of the house, that, yes, it is a, you know, the rear are these modest facades, but for my clients, they really tried to be respectful of what was there. I had extensive conversations with Brian and Jared about the Oriole, there was a lot of discussion because they too were concerned about the removal, but in their opinion, given that pretty much all of the historic material has been removed already, and, I mean, I don't think it's a... Let me see now, should I take you back? Here, you know, you barely see, if anything, one of the thoughts is, you know, on Willow Street and Mid-Oak, you can see there is this, you know, these double-height features of these tea, tea terraces as part of what is going on in the back of these buildings. Oops, sorry, I took you right to the beginning. Oh, and here is the back from the street again. I mean, this is at wintertime and there's absolutely no foliage, the bottom one, 2020, it really doesn't see minimal visibility. And also, the other thing I would say is that really, this is a playground, this is not a park in which people are sitting, so most of the people are further back from the playground. So I would contend, and my clients would contend, that we have really tried to do a respectful insertion and understanding that it is visible and we've really tried to upgrade the house. I mean, if there is a concern about whether or not that addition is wood or steel, I'd be happy to go back to my clients and discuss doing it in wood as opposed to steel, but I, we had felt that with the steel, we could get the smaller mutton mullions and also, it sort of clarifies, this is new. I'm not trying to pretend that this is part of the original house.
And so in all of the views, what you would see is the top portion, top floor of it, not, you don't ever see the double-height condition, you just see the parlor level.
Really, yes, because it starts, you know, four feet down and you're quite far back, you know, you're standing way back here and this is four feet down, the, the bottom part.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any other questions? Any questions? Okay, not seeing any hands raised. Oh, I see Commissioner Chen, please go ahead.
Testimony about the brick between the proportion in terms of extra layer of brick, I think that's what the testimony was about.
Right, so there was a comment about doing a brick spandrel instead of a steel spandrel between the first floor and the parlor level of the bay window. Maybe if you could go to the elevation drawing.
I think I have a rendering here, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess that, for, I mean, it's something we could look at, but again, I don't, you know, for me, that is an attempt to try and sort of pull this new insertion back into the, into what is a pretty light, almost more of a curtain wall and then adding that masonry, the weight of that masonry spandrel panel, doesn't visually make sense to me, but if that was something that was clearly important to the commissioners to, to bring that back in, we could definitely look at it. I mean, maybe another way to think about it as opposed to a, you know, a masonry spandrel panel, we could think about that piece of steel as the color of the terracotta. But again, I guess for me, I feel that, you know, this design is somehow a cleaner, clearer design, but if that's something that's important, obviously, I would talk with my, with my clients and if they were agreeable, I know they're, you know, they really want to work with the commissioners and so we would definitely take a look at it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. All right, I am not seeing any hands raised for questions, so I think we'll go ahead and make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make that motion?
So moved.
Great. Commissioner Lutfee, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and in one second, I will have us all unmuted. And Commissioner Gustafson, I can't seem to unmute you, I don't know if you have to accept it. Okay, all in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, we'll move into discussion. And I'm going to actually start with Commissioner Chen, since you asked the question, you might have some thoughts if you'd like to start, that would be great.
I think this was previously raised. I think that the testimony from Historic Society has a valid point. I think that the proportion may be disproportionate to the, to the size and there's something in here that seems a little bit excessive, unless it's just me.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Devonshire.
I believe that the previously approved plan is much more preferable than this one.
Okay.
I would approve the previous one.
Which is already approved, so you do not support this. Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
No, I mean, I certainly agree that the previous one was more historically appropriate. I find, though, that the one that's proposed is well within the norm of what we approve in rear yards. I don't really have one objections to it. Some of the detailing of the, of the double-height expression could be explored with staff, but this is, it seems to me to be well within what we normally approve.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I find, just as Commissioner Goldblum does, that this is very typical of things we have approved as rear yard additions, and although there was testimony that it is very visible, it really does not appear to be so based on the views that we can see of it. I don't think preserving the Oriole window is essential because it's a very late addition as from every evidence anyone's been able to find, and of course, this is not the current. Oriole is probably not even the one that was originally there, so I, and I feel that it's, the rear window is broken up by the vertical and horizontal expressions, so that I don't think it's, as, as we've often approved for windows that are just sheet windows in effect, so I think this is appropriate. Perhaps the early one could have been more appropriate, but I think this is something that we, very typical of what we often approve, so I could approve.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, I, I think I agree that it is sort of a fairly typical type of occasion that we've in the past. I think perhaps to reduce the visibility, especially because it's at the top of the, the window, is that they could make the roof section of the double-height window smaller or shallower, so it doesn't project up as high as it does. It seems like it's projecting up quite a bit higher than the original lintels of those windows, but I think I could approve it.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I think it's appropriate and very similar to many other things that we've approved in the past despite its slight visibility, but I'd agree with Commissioner Holford Smith about perhaps sort of thinning out that top, that top line by making the, that piece a bit more shallow.
Okay, thank you. John?
He was, he had gone into the waiting room for some particular reason, but I'm imagining him back in right now.
And shall I move? Oh, he's here. Okay, Commissioner Gustafson, were you able to follow the discussion?
In part, but am I being asked to vote or am I being asked to comment?
Asked to comment.
I, I, I was a little surprised at the, at the testimony from the Brooklyn Heights Association, because I fail to see the, the reason why this would be treated as some sort of front facade. Visibility seems minimal and, and I think the changes are extremely modest, so I'm fine with it as it is.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson?
I, I, I'd like the approved facade because of its character. I, I would only add to that facade, the window, the front window, bottom front window, but I, I, I prefer the, the approved facade other than the new one.
Okay, so I guess we have to be clear, it's, it's not a question of comparing one to the other. One happened to be eligible for staff-level approval for certain changes, but the proposal before us is to, to do the double-height bay window here. So I, yeah, so the, so the question is, do you, so you do not find the double-height window appropriate, is that correct?
I, I find, I don't find it appropriate.
Okay. All right, and Commissioner Lutfee?
I, I happen to feel that overall, they've taken a very thoughtful approach to this and that it is typical of what we approve. I do agree that with Commissioners Holford Smith and Shamir Baron, that there is a heaviness at the top that could, if it's working with staff, if that could be looked at, I think it would help the proportions and also would be helpful for the visibility, which seems overall to be very minimal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Again, the advantage of going last all around the table, it's all been said, and I agree with those who have said very eloquently that this is appropriate, in spite of interesting testimony from the Brooklyn Knights Association. I think the, this is not equivalent to the rear facades of the, of the promenade and so forth, and it is minimally visible in my judgment, so, and I support the idea of thinning out the top, I think that's a great idea, so I'm in support of it.
Okay, great, so I think we have enough votes to approve it, as is with the recommendation to work with the staff to thin out or lighten or change the slope of the roof to lower the height and refine the proportions. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you be able to make that motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, in the matter of LPC 20-08403, 11 Cranberry Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in 1836, the application is to alter the rear facade. I note that the building's style, scale, and materials are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the existing Oriole feature has been highly altered and clad with stucco, is not here to be original to the building, therefore, its removal will not eliminate a significant architectural feature, that the proposed work will be only minimally visible through Harry Chapin Playground and Mid-Austri to the north, that the proposed alteration to the rear facade, including a two-story projecting bay window assembly with multi-light sash, will be in keeping with the materials palette and residential scale of the building and other materials, oh, sorry, other buildings on the block, and that the work detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district, and that the applicant will work with staff to reduce the height of the roof over the double-height window to reduce its visibility and its heaviness.
And Commissioner Holford, Commissioner Shamir Baron, will you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
No.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
No.
Commissioner Lutfee?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with nine in favor and two opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to the next item now.
The next item is item number two. This is LPC 20-06366, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in a borough of Brooklyn, Lot 5183, Lot 1, 403 East 19th Street in the Dittmas Park Historic District. A colonial revival-style house designed by Benjamin Dreisler and built in 1909 to 10. The application is to legalize the replacement of roofing without LPC permits.
And Commissioners, the applicants have joined the meeting, and please state your name for the record and you may begin.
This is the map of the Dittmas Park Historic District.
Please state your name for the record.
Property in question right there.
Mr. Lawler, can you just state your name for the record?
Daniel Lawler.
Thank you.
This is the front elevation of the house, it is brick and stucco with wood trim. What we are talking about is the replacement of the roof, the upper roof and its dormers was replaced without Landmark's approval sometime before my client bought it. The porch roof and the garage roof, which is not shown here, is sort of demolished. You'll see pictures of it. This is a side view of the same thing. Here's the front porch, the upper roof. The historic tax photos from 1940 show this upper roof. The historic tax photos from nineteen forty show this upper roof. A little hard to see on the screen, but it is an asbestos sort of diamond patterned roof with kind of barrel shaped pieces at the hip rafters and the ridges. You can see it a little clearer here in the designation photo from the early eighties. You can also see from the eighties that the porch roof was an asphalt shingle. It is unclear to me whether that was the case originally. And we have actually just this week found evidence that originally the porch at least had cedar shake shingles. This is a drawing, details of what that roof might have been in the nineteen forties. This asbestos shingle with this rolled or barrel shaped corner piece. This is the current condition. So again, the upper roof had was replaced fairly recently before my client bought the house. The porch roof is deteriorating. The in there was a violation in, I think, two thousand and three. Oh, here it is. This is the violation photo for removing material from the roof without a per the porch roof without a permit. It remains in that condition. What we would like to do is keep the upper roof, which is this architectural asphalt shingle, and use the same material for the porch roof and the garage. Here are pictures in the neighborhood of various other houses in various styles, all of which have architectural asphalt shingles that have been recently put on and approved by LPC. Here are three more examples. Various styles, but all using architectural asphalt shingles, different colors. There are some different roof materials in the neighborhood. You in slate, a few in Spanish ceramic tiles. And I found one house that still has some of this asbestos tile up on the upper part here. It's been replaced not very nicely down here. And one last example on five fifty five sixty one E Seventeenth Street. Just this last fall, the roof was replaced with an architectural asphalt shingle. This is the Google Street View that is current, but obviously the picture was taken before this happened. And we can see we have the same asbestos diamond shaped shingle with the barrel shape on the ridge. So what we are asking for is that the existing upper roof be approved as built and that the same material is approved to continue that shingle work on the porch roof and the garage.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have? I do see a question, Commissioner Gustafson, please go ahead.
Yeah, my understanding from the presentation is that to the extent there's any illegal work done here, it had nothing to do with this current owner. Is that correct?
That is correct. It was all my the current owner is is fixing up a slew of issues with ECB. And, you know, the previous owner did all sorts of pretty bad stuff inside and out. So yes, this was prior to his owning the house.
All right, glad to hear it. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? This time, okay. Not seeing any hands raised. We'll turn to see if there are any speakers for this item. Lisa?
So nobody signed up to speak and I don't see anybody in the waiting room.
Okay, and Rich, do we have a resolution from the community board or any other written testimony?
There is no resolution from the community board and no additional testimony.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Goldblum, I see you have a question. Please go ahead.
Just wanted to. I never mind.
Okay, so so just to be clear, evidence suggests that the original roofing on this house was an asbestos tile, so a historic sort of substitute material. And it's unclear what the roof of the porch was, although you say that you have recently found evidence that it was cedar shake. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
The upper roof is your shake too and the put on pre nineteen forties.
That is true. It could have been an early replacement. Okay, so if and then the proposal is to legalize asphalt shingle and to do asphalt shingle on the porch, which is a material that the commission has approved elsewhere in this historic district on buildings of this age and type. So if that is clear to everyone, then why don't we go ahead and make a motion to close the hearing? So Commissioner Chapin, would you make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and all in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so let's start our discussion. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you like to start on this one?
Sure. I think that since in the past we have approved asphalt shingles on other houses that similar age and that originally had the the asbestos shingle, that I can approve the installation of asphalt shingles on the porch and the garage and to the violation on the roof.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I agree.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
I'm okay with the legalization of the roof, but I think because the porch is closer to one's site, I would suggest that that be the original wood.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with Commissioner Goldblum.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
I agree.
You agree that the porch should be wood?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and you know, I normally would be next to the table and I I actually could approve the the asphalt on the porch because I think that in this district we have approved a lot of asphalt shingles even at this level and particularly where there is no historic fabric and found that the architectural shingle in the right color and the right quality can provide the same textural effect. So I'll be on the yes side. Okay, Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I'm on your side, Sarah. I think it all of what you said is what I agree with, but also I think it would be weird to have two different materials and two different roofs on one house. So that's why I'm.
Okay. Great, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree with the asphalt shingles.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with you, Sarah.
Okay, and Commissioner Gustafson?
And me as well. I agree with you.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm with Commissioner Goldblum that the the roof and the material closer to what's visible at at eye height should be wood.
Okay, great. So I think we have a mixed opinion on the porch, but I believe we have enough to approve the asphalt for the porch and to legalize it on the main roof. So I will ask Commissioner Bland, do you would you be able to read that motion?
Only from my phone and I.
Okay, let me let me ask Commissioner Holford Smith since you led this discussion.
Sure. Ah, let's just see, in the matter of LPC twenty dash zero six three six six four oh three nineteenth Street in the Dittmas Park Historic District. A colonial revival style house designed by Benjamin Dreisler and built in nineteen oh nine nineteen ten. The application is to legalize the replacement of roofing without landmarks preservation commission permits. I note building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Dittmas Park Historic District. I further note that replace with the replacement of the main roof has already completed without a landmarks permit and that the shingles at the front porch have been removed, but new roofing has not yet been installed. I recommend approval, finding that the historic diagonal diagonal patterned asbestos shingles that were removed in a deteriorated condition warranting replacement and are no longer manufactured and therefore could not be replaced in kind, that the front porch roof was replaced prior to prior to designation. Therefore, the installation of new asphalt shingle roofing in this location will not damage or eliminate any historic roofing, that the proposed three dimensional brown asphalt shingles are in keeping with the texture and earthy color of the historic asbestos shingles and otherwise approximate the appearance of wood shingle roofing, which is consistent the age and style of the house, that the proposed roofing is consistent with the wide variety of historic and modern roofing materials, including terracotta tiles, asphalt shingles, asbestos shingles, and wood shingles found throughout this historic and that the existing proposed work will not detract from the special architecture, architectural and historic character of the building and the Dittmas Park Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes. Chair Carol?
I.
Commissioner Bland?
I.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
No.
Commissioner Chapin?
I.
Commissioner Chen?
I.
Commissioner Devonshire?
No.
Commissioner Goldblum?
No.
Commissioner Gustafson?
I.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
I.
Okay. Let's see. Did I miss somebody? I have, sorry, I have seven in favor and three opposing. Are there orders? Eight in favor and three opposing?
It was eight in favor.
Okay.
Eight in favor.
Eight in favor, got it. Thank you. Sorry, eight in favor and three opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved, Mr. Lawler. Good luck. And we'll move to, we're actually, this is a good time for us to take a break. We have, we're a few minutes ahead of schedule and we have a longer presentation coming up. So we'll take a five minute break at this time. Commissioners, you can just turn your video and sound off. And when you come back, turn your video back on so we'll know that you're here. And we'll see everyone in five minutes. To item, public hearing item number three, which is forty nine to fifty one Chambers Street. And now is the time to enter the meeting if you wish to testify. And we'll go ahead and read it into the record and then turn it over to the applicant.
Okay, thanks. So as mentioned, this is item number three, LPC twenty dash zero eight zero zero. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in a borough of Manhattan, block one fifty three lot eighteen, forty nine to fifty one Chambers Street, the former immigrant industrial savings bank, individual and interior landmark, also in the African burial ground in the Commons Historic District. A Bozar style skyscraper and interior designed by Raymond F. Almerall and built in nineteen oh nine to twelve. The application is to alter the interior banking hall, install signage, a marquee, and lighting of the Chambers Street facade and alter windows and doors at the Reed Street facade.
And Commissioners, the applicants have joined the meeting. And please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Good morning, everyone. This is Ward Dennis with Higgins Quaysbarth. It's really great to see everybody. As Corey mentioned, this presentation is substantially about the reuse of the banking hall at forty nine Chambers Street. If we were, if this is a normal public hearing, we could all look out the window and see the building from the hearing room. But we're here digitally and we're glad that we're able to do it digitally. The Immigrant Savings Bank was designed in nineteen eleven. Raymond Almerall was the architect. The proposal that you'll be hearing is a pretty unique use for a banking hall and it's one that we're particularly excited about as it will create a truly public use that will bring thousands of visitors a day into the space. The tenant Culture Spaces operates a number of similar venues, mostly in France. So before we get into the specifics of this application, I would like to ask Culture Spaces Director of Development Luke Archambault to introduce his company and their approach to the reuse of historic spaces and management of historic properties. And Luke, if you go ahead, I will advance the slides as you're ready. Okay, I think here we go.
Good afternoon, everybody. So I'm Lucas from France. Our goal is to create a digital art center in the immigrant industrial saving banks. To introduce the masters of art history to our visitors. We plan to project directly on the architecture of these iconic sites, some monumental video exhibitions that we that will immerse the visitors in the universe of the greatest masters. Their whole experience is based on emotions, thanks to the artwork for sure, but also the soundtrack and the site by itself. The soul of the site will be a strong element of the success of the project. I think we we add, we were able to produce a powerful tool to democratize arts and we will attract art lovers as well as people who never visit museums. In front of you, you have an image of the of the trailer of the Van Gogh exhibition that we show on a site in the Souza France. I don't think that we will see it now, right?
No.
Okay. So the next slide, we just present you what we have currently as a digital art center mainly in France, just to give you some understanding of what type of sites we are talking about. When we are talking about iconic sites. So in Paris, it's a former foundry of the nineteenth century and not in the center of Paris, but in the twelve arrondissement for the people who knows. The next one is a former stone quarry in Souza France, Le Bois-Clos. So it's a huge stone quarry where we were able to to project video on walls and floors. And the third one, it's a former submarine base from the World War Two in Bordeaux, in the south west of France, where we created an aquatic experience based on the So the next slide, we present you what we have in mind in terms of how it works generally. So the the public will enter when they want and they can exit when they want. The idea it's not to be viewed as a museum, but more a place where they will be enjoy art experience. As I told you, the the site is very important for us in terms of storytelling, but also in terms of of environments. And there will be, there will be, as for all our sites, a small teaser at the beginning of the of the look to present the the feeling of the of the site to the visitor. Then there will be a long exhibition about the greatest masters. It could be Clint, it could be Van Gogh, it could be Dali, it could be Picasso, and a short exhibition that have some link with with a great masters presented. But for less well-known artists, for instance, for clips, usually we we show clips with under the exhibition. And then at the end of this loop, there are some architectural lightning presenting the the whole space to the visitor. So briefly, what is Culture Space next role is? We are operating in cultural sectors for thirty years now. We are managing historical monuments like the Amphi Theatre of Nîmes or antique theatre of Orange. So very old monuments, as you know. Welcome, four point six million visitors every year in our different monuments. So we are used to make some walks in a listed building. And we have created the digital art center in two thousand and twelve in order to attract the young generation in our site and to share that all of our reason. So coming.
So turning back to the building, this proposal includes many interventions that I think will be familiar to the commissioners from reuse of other designated banking halls. But it also includes some interventions that are very specific to the Culture Spaces program, including equipment installation and very, very importantly for the for the program, light control. So I'm going to take you through some of the proposed changes. So I'm going to take you through some of the proposed changes in general terms in this presentation. We have a lot of material, but we also have a lot of backup material that we can come back to during Q and A as necessary. As you may recall, forty nine Chambers was owned by the City of New York and it was sold by the city about seven years ago to a developer who has converted the upper floors to residential apartments. That project has completed, leaving the banking hall really as the last step in the rehabilitation of the building. These are historic views on the left in nineteen twelve and on the right in nineteen seventy five. Draw your attention in particular to the existing signage that was on the building in nineteen seventy five. We are proposing alterations to the front of the building, including signage, lighting and a canopy over this western left-hand entrance, which will be part of the Culture Spaces program. The main focus of the application though is the interior banking hall. And on the right, you see here a plan of the banking hall with the green line marking the area of designation. These areas around back here are, at, at least at the floor, very utilitarian backup house areas. This is the area behind the tellers. Obviously, the walls and the ceilings in these areas are part of the protected space, but the floors are, are not. And the banking hall, just for a little orientation, this is the Chambers Street entry down here. It has more or less a church-like arrangement with North Ex area at the front, center aisle in the main public banking area with the side aisles as the teller counters and teller screens here. And then this back area of teller counters, almost apps-like configuration. This stair here, as you will see, goes down and out to Reed Street, which is back over here. These are historic photos from the time of construction. This is on the left, a view looking towards that staircase in Reed Street and towards the windows overlooking Reed Street. You can see some of the teller counters on the left here. This is a historic view of the teller counters, very similar to what we see today. The only difference being that at some point in the middle of the twentieth century, this screen was replaced with a metal grill. These are more recent photos. As I mentioned, the city did acquire the property at some point prior to the nineteen seventies. During the nineteen seventies, as you see in this left-hand photo, the banking hall was used as a DMV office. And most recently, the banking hall was used as the temporary quarters for the city council while they were renovating the city hall, city council chambers. On the following slides, I'm going to take you through some existing condition images. Most recently, the banking hall has been used as construction offices and some storage space for the ongoing construction upstairs. So some of what you see is just that leftover storage of material which has been cleaned up by now. This is a view at the center of the banking hall, looking towards the southeast. This is the Chambers Street wall here. The vestibule of the revolving doors entering off Chambers Street here, and you can see one of the teller screens behind these doors here. This is a view looking straight south towards Chambers Street with that revolving door vestibule. And this is a view to the southwest, showing the Western Bank of teller counters. This view is also a good example to show the condition of the masonry and the interior. You can see that the marble is, all of the finished materials inside are marble or plaster. The marble is very heavily soiled with a lot of tar, nicotine, smoke type staining over the years. Probably a lot of oils on the, on the stone that has attracted dirt and kept it in place. You also see in some images that the plaster on the ceiling has some water damage, but is generally intact. This is a view looking north towards that Reed Street stair. These stairs go down and out to Reed Street, which is one level down. This is that north wraparound teller counter with a temporary display panel in front of it. Also note here, sort of barely visible on the left, there is an existing elevator at this location that takes, that takes you down to the lower level. The exhibition that Culture Spaces is planning is going to happen on both levels, the basement and the, the main banking hall level. This is a view on the west side, teller counters, behind the teller counters. You can see that in this undesignated area, there are no decorative finishes on the floor and the backs of the teller counters themselves are unfinished as well. We are proposing a few interventions, including a stair at this location. We've tried wherever possible to locate them outside the designated areas. This view is taken looking west in that sort of North Ex area at the front, where you would have had reception offices and the like. And this view was taken a couple of years ago when this space was being used as a showroom for the condominium sales up above. And what we did at this time was we cleaned all of the marble in this front area and you can see that this marble has been cleaned. And this marble on this side has not been cleaned. We also did basic repairs to the plaster and repainted the plaster. This is the level of restoration, rehabilitation and repair work that Culture Spaces will be undertaking throughout the banking hall space. And what's really nice about this, as Luke intimated before, is that the light colored stone and the light colored painting on the plaster makes for a very good background on which to project. So when we're projecting all of these images, it works very well on this material and we've done a lot of tests inside the banking hall to validate that. So as I mentioned, some of the changes that we are proposing are very familiar to you, I think, in terms of banking halls. One of the big issues is circulation and access through. You have areas of banking halls that were not meant to be publicly accessible, that we now want to be publicly accessible. The very typical approach, as here at Bowery Savings Bank or here at the Williamsburg Savings Bank, most recently, is making very selective removals of teller counters and other barriers so that you can get circulation through and around the entire space. And that is part of what we will be showing you here. So I'm going to walk you through very quickly the visitor experience within, within the exhibition and then go through each of these areas in detail to show the interventions that we're doing. As I mentioned, one of the really important things for us in, in terms of Culture Spaces program is light control and we are proposing in three locations to create, in effect, boxes that sit on the floor. Solid boxes that will allow people to go in and out without letting light in and out, and that's important for us. So the entrance to the exhibition will be through the fifty one Chambers Street entry on Chambers and into the first of these three boxes, which is shown in green, which will be the coatroom and ticketing area. After getting your ticket, dropping off your coat, you will come into the main banking hall space here where you will be able to see the exhibition. As Luke mentioned, the exhibition is on a loop, so as you come in, the exhibition may be running or the architectural lighting may be up. The, we are proposing at these four areas here to remove sections of teller counters for circulation in and around. We have a second box that's proposed back here, wrapping around the backside outside the designated area. This is where we have our restrooms and we will also have a mezzanine on top for viewing. We will be using the Reed Street stairs as the primary access to the exhibition on the lower level. We'll also be introducing a convenience stair here on the west side so that visitors can go downstairs and we have a proposed emergency stair back here at the northwest corner. And then finally, at the end of the exhibit, patrons will leave through the third box, which mirrors the first, which includes a gift shop that you'll be able to exit out, go back, get your coat if you left it there, and then exit through the front entrance of the building through those revolving, through that revolving door vestibule that I pointed out earlier. You'll note that one of the revolving door drums will be modified to have a swing door and that's to allow ADA access out through that door. So taking each one of these in order and itemizing the interventions that we're proposing. The first intervention at this west wall of the banking hall, we are proposing three new openings within the marble wall. It removes a section of the plain marble. It does not touch the decorated marble up above. All three of these will be punched openings where we will return the marble onto the jam so that you have a, a finished condition coming through. This one down here will be the public entry into the ticketing area. These two up here are for access to back of house spaces. We have details showing how we're achieving that. We are also at these two locations here proposing to drop the window sills on the teller windows. You can see that there's a screen here with a single door and two windows. What we are proposing is simply to drop the sill and create three openings, but retaining that screen as, as a pass-through and marking that end of the teller counters. This is an existing condition view looking to the southwest. This is the area where the new door portal will be created. You can see the revolving door drums here. And this is the proposed view of that box that I described, which is, I think, very literally a box. It'll be painted gypsum wallboard. It will have solid doors. Again, we want to keep the light inside this box and be able to control the light in the banking hall separately. It also, the box itself is low enough that it does not obscure the decorative material that you see, the cornices and the like that you see up here. Also to note, on the windows of Chambers Street, we are proposing solid panels that sit within the masonry openings of the windows. Those are, again, to control light. They will be painted wallboard. They will have the muntin grids of the windows painted on the inside of them. And they will be illuminated by architectural lighting from beyond that will highlight the windows during the architectural lighting periods. So second, coming into the main banking hall space, this is an existing view looking to the north, the Reed Street stairs here. This platform right here is where historically there was a check writing desk. That desk has been in storage and will be restored and replaced to this location, as you can see here. What you can also see here is the window coverings on the Reed Street windows. You can start to see some of the openings in the teller counters to the east and the west. And you can see that mezzanine construction sitting back here. The other thing that you will start to notice in this image is the cornice up at this level where we have equipment installed. And these cornices here and over the teller counters are where we're concentrating all the equipment. So there are a lot of projectors, there's a lot of lighting equipment to make the exhibition happen. And all of that, to the greatest extent possible, is concealed up here and we'll show you details for that. Lower down, we are showing speakers and subwoofers at the base of the column sort of throughout the space. But that is the extent of the equipment that we are proposing at eye level, as it were. And the extent of the equipment that would be attached to the architectural fabric. So this is an example of what you would see while the exhibition is running. The previous slide is what you would see, say, for the last fifteen minutes of the exhibition loop that Luke described, where the architectural lighting will be up and people can see the, can see the space in its, in its lit form. But during the other hour of the exhibition, this is a seventy-five minute loop, all of the, all of the area below the cornice will be lit up by the projectors that sit up here. And the, the ceiling itself is not part of the projection. These next two pages are details for those window panels that I described. You can see on the right here that the panel for Reed Street sets deep inside the masonry opening. It's a, it's a metal frame with gypsum wallboard painted. It will be painted on the inside with a muntin grid and it will be painted on the outside with a trompe l'oeil painting that will give the effect of reflections of buildings around, so it doesn't look like you're looking into a blank wall from the outside. Some more detail on Chambers Street. The only difference is that the windows are not set so deeply, so the panels themselves project out about two inches or so. I mentioned all the equipment that will go up at the cornice level. The way that we're doing that is through a truss system, which you can see a detail of here. So these metal trusses will anchor through undecorated plaster to the structure behind, sitting on top of the plaster cornices. There will be a metal fascia panel at the front that will be painted out to match the adjacent plaster, so as to obscure better some of the visibility up here. We have dotted in the equipment itself. The real application here though is the installation of these trusses. And what that allows us to do obviously is relocate equipment as we need to without making further penetrations into the historic fabric. You'll also see here in this section, very conveniently for us, the cornices include a gutter up here and even outlets through the cornice to the backup space beyond, and this gives us a great location to run wiring, cabling and the like. We can also run cabling through here. So you will not see wiring and the like. You will just see this equipment sitting atop a truss with a fascia panel. Here below are the speakers and subwoofers that I mentioned before. These are the only items, again, that are attached directly to the historic masonry down below. These are examples of the kinds of lighting fixtures that we're using today, the kinds of video projectors we're using today. Again, all of these would be attached to the trusses and would be relocated as necessary without making further attachments or penetrations to historic fabric. The lighting within the space, the center lighting here, these red dots are these pendants over here. These are not historic. They, they will be removed. The laylights above will be repaired and we will be installing new architectural lighting above the laylights to light them from above as they would have been historically. These pend, these lighting fixtures here that sit over the teller counters in orange are historic and they will be restored and relamped. We will shorten the chain so that we can lift these light fixtures up above the level of the projection, but otherwise they will remain in place and be functional lighting fixtures for us. I mentioned the speakers before. These are details of that. This photo image here is an image of a similar speaker at Saint Patrick's Cathedral, showing how it's, how it's installed there and how it works there. Another thing that we need for safety purposes on the Reed Street stairs up here is safety lighting for the steps themselves while the exhibition is running. The room will be dark. We need to light the stairs. The way that we propose to do that is by installing these very small LED fixtures. They're less than an inch in diameter and they will be installed into the underside of the railing. So this is the fixture as it sticks out, but it will actually be flushed to the underside of the railing. They will be installed every twelve to eighteen inches or so and provide downlighting during the exhibition. Teller window openings, we discussed two of them at the south end of the area here. In the main baking space, we are proposing to remove one bank of three windows on the east side and one bank of three windows on the west side. As with all the other removals, we will be finishing the returns here. We will also be using this salvage material to return onto the north sides of the boxes and I will show that to you in a second. Image on the right shows existing condition and the proposed after. At the north end of the banking hall, at these two locations, there are these two smaller windows. We propose to lower the sills here to create a single opening through, again, keeping that screen and keeping the idea of passing from one space to another, from the front of house to the back of house. This is a view looking to the southwest from further back, existing condition. And this is the proposed view. You can see on the right here, I mentioned that part You can see on the right here, I mentioned that part that we will be using the salvage material to return onto the box. This is that coat check area here and ticketing area here. And we are returning the marble, the salvage marble onto that box. You can see the check writing desk here. You can see the equipment peeking up above from the trusses. These cornices are deep enough that the equipment will be minimally visible as much as it can be. And you can see here that raised up lighting fixture. The mezzanine and viewing platform that sits at the north end of the space is to, primarily to have our restrooms, so that we have restrooms at the upper level and the lower level. This detail here is the same detail that we are using for all three of the boxes. It's eight foot clear on the inside, so the minimal that we need for occupiable space on the inside, 10 foot in height overall. For this north box only, we do have a railing on top, and that's for the mezzanine viewing stand. There are two stairs to either side. Also, at this north box, there is a louver adjacent so that we can get exhaust out from the restrooms. One thing to note with all three of the boxes is that these are not attaching to the walls or to the teller screens. There's a one-inch gap on this side, two-inch gap on this side, and that is maintained throughout. All of the attachments for the boxes themselves will be at the floor rather than at the marble walls. This is an elevation view on Reed Street showing the louvers that I just mentioned. We'll just simply be removing one sash of windows and installing a louver. And then this is a existing condition view, the Reed Street stairs, that north set of teller counters. You can see right here that elevator that I mentioned before. This is the door for the elevator. We will be re, putting a new cab in the elevator and extending the overrun slightly so that we can get a properly functioning elevator to go down to the basement. This shows the mezzanine sticking up above the north teller screen with the railing on top. It's a very simple metal picket railing. All of the new interventions are designed to be as simple and minimal as possible. The new stairs that we mentioned, the main circulation down to the basement will be through Reed Street, but we are proposing a second convenience stair behind the west tellers over here. It will go through a non-designated area of what's now wood and linoleum flooring. It will have the same simple picket railing system that we're using for the mezzanine. Again, not trying to call attention to itself, not trying to stick out within the space. This is a view at the north end, looking in this direction to the northeast. This is the backside of those north teller counters. This is the existing elevator overrun, elevator and overrun. The electrical boxes and the HVAC equipment on top will be removed, and this will become just a simple box slightly taller. This is the location here where the new egress stairs will go, and this is a rendered view of the same. So egress stairs out to Reed Street here, stairs coming up to the mezzanine level here. And you can see at the very far right, the elevator override. In terms of exterior alterations, we are proposing lighting, signage, and canopy at the front of the building. This is the existing condition view. On the right here is the residential entry with its existing canopy. We propose to match this canopy at the 51 Chambers entry. This is a proposed view of what we are applying for. We will be reusing the existing flagpoles up top with new banners attached. We will be installing new flat banners within the window openings between the columns, very similar to what you would see at a museum, for instance. We are proposing a projecting banner sign at the very west end above the entry to mark the entry, the canopy that I mentioned, which will have signage on it, and two new signs to either side of the entry itself. These existing patreons to either side of the main entry, we will be reusing, and we will be showing you architectural lighting on the facade as well. The banner sign that we're proposing at the west end, it is a vinyl banner with an LED luminous sheet within. So the banner will have, will have lighting behind it to illuminate it at night. The banner itself is 17 feet tall, and it's about 29 inches deep. And again, there are one of these, and it's meant to mark the entrance at the west end. The flat banners here will be set within metal panels with a vinyl fabric stretched in between. You can also see here that we have rendered out the windows to show the effect of the trompe l'oeil reflection, the faux reflections that we'll be painting on the inside of the windows so that you're not staring at sort of a blank gray wall there. The signs to either side of the 51 entrance will also be these metal panels with stretch fabric in between, LED strip lighting up top and bottom behind the, behind the stretch panel itself. Details of what we're proposing for the flagpoles, again, the flagpoles are existing. We will be using them with our banners. And then the canopy, the commissioners will probably remember that as part of the residential application, the developer applied for, and there was approved a canopy to be installed over the 49 Chambers entry, the east entry. During construction, it turned out that the structural carrying capacity of that cantilever canopy could not be supported within the small area at the jams where the columns could be installed. And what was installed did differ slightly from what was originally approved. What we are showing in these two images here are the existing canopy as it was installed at 49 Chambers Street. It has about a six-inch front on this front face as opposed to about two inches as originally approved. So we have simply used photos of the 49 Chambers entry and laid over on that our proposed signage. So this is the canopy that was installed at 49 Chambers and the canopy that we are proposing for 51 Chambers. This will be internally illuminated with punched-out letter signage. This is a detail of the canopy as it was built at 49 and as we're proposing. Again, the primary difference is that the front edge of it is taller than originally approved so that the structural carrying capacity of the truss here could be beefed up. Architectural lighting will be installed on the ledges and setbacks. Almost all of this is to highlight the architectural features of the building, including these spots that we're proposing up here. Small amount of the signage, sorry, a small amount of the lighting is to illuminate the signage that we are proposing, particularly above here and here. More details for the lighting. Finally, on Reed Street, we are proposing three new, to modify three existing window openings to become means of egress. We have the existing Reed Street exit here, which will be one means of egress, and then the sort of very low windows will be modified. The existing condition is about an eight-to-10-inch-high granite sill, a very low granite sill, and then these bronze grills. The bronze grills will be removed and they will be retained on site. The sills will be dropped, and we will install new metal doors, metal matching the finish of the grills themselves with opaque glass inserts. This is just a floor plan showing you where these exits are. This is that emergency egress from upstairs coming out. And then this is one of the exits from the basement coming out, and the second entrance from the basement coming out. And then our existing means of egress from the, from that historic Reed Street stair. So that takes me to the end and finally wraps it up. I thank you for your patience. We went over a lot of material, and we have a lot more details if there are questions. We've also gone through many iterations of the design on this, looking at how we, in particular, control the light and how people pass through the space. And we have looked at a lot of options for how to do that and looked at a lot of these options with LPC staff, who has been really helpful in this process. And I think that the interventions that we are proposing here achieve the programmatic requirements in a very minimal and appropriate way and really will allow this to become a fully publicly accessible space. There will be thousands of people coming through this space. God willing, there will be thousands of people going through any space soon. But this will be a public space where we will have many, many people coming through during the day, seeing this interior landmark in a way that probably no other interior landmark is seen in terms of the number of people per day. The result will be very transformative. We're excited to open the doors and make this a public space, and I welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you very much for your detailed presentation. And we do have a questioner from, a question from Commissioner Goldblum, followed by Commissioner Devonshire.
Hi, thank you. A few questions for you. First of all, you go back, and I apologize if you went over it, I might have, I might have, I might have missed it. The, show, show me a little bit in more detail what you're going to see from the outside when you look in the windows, what that, what that blanked-out panel is.
Give me one second here. Actually, this is a, this is a good comparison. So that blanked-out panel, it will be gypsum wallboard on both faces. There will be a metal frame to which the wallboard is attached. From the outside, this is what you see existing. This is a normal day when I think the lighting on the inside probably is not very high. On the outside face of the wallboard, we will be painting a sort of trompe l'oeil, a faux effect of reflected buildings beyond. So what you're seeing here is a representation of that painted reflection.
Image of that, of that trompe l'oeil image? Do you have any photographs of that or proposals for that?
Peter, do we have in the appendix examples of the trompe l'oeil? We have, we had some examples that we had shared with staff that showed how they achieve that effect.
We didn't, we didn't put any in the presentation.
Okay. We did have examples that we looked at, and I think that this is, this is very, you know, we're very conscious of the window covering and blocking up the windows, and obviously, it's hugely important programmatically. We can, we can, we think that we can achieve it successfully, and we can certainly work with you and the staff to, you know, to look at examples of how that would be done.
So the idea of this, of this window wall, basically, is that from the outside, you'll see through to a trompe l'oeil painted surface. On the inside, you'll look out, and where you, where there were windows, there will be an aluminum grid that emulates those windows arrangements with a kind of a tan sheetrock infill, right?
Yeah, I think it would be more of a gray sheetrock infill, and what you're looking at here would actually be painted on. It would not be an aluminum grid.
Oh, okay.
So this is a metal, this is a metal frame, but this would just be, this would be a, another trompe l'oeil finish.
And you go to the, the entry box, entry black box.
Give me one second here.
There you go.
Sorry.
That one's good. So what is it made of?
This is, it's standard framing with gypsum wallboard painted on all, both on the, on the, on the roof, as it were, and on the, on the face.
Last question. Is, you were saying that there would be times when the artwork would be up? And, and so what, what is the intended? Is the, is the projection going to be up 24/7? Is the projection going to be up momentarily during a rotating series of images? How does it work in terms of the program of the space?
Yeah, so these are, these are first video projections, and we included on one of the first slides a link to a very short, two-minute-or-so video, which, if you have time to look at or have had time to look at, is very informative because it is, it is a, it's not a static image as you see here. The program itself is 75 minutes, and for the first 60 minutes, this is what you would see. Or some variation on this. It was, as Luke mentioned, there is the long program of the master artist and then a shorter program of a local artist. And then during the last 15 minutes or so of the exhibition, that will go off, and this is what you will see. So there will be a time out of every loop in which this is the experience of what you will have. And Luke mentioned, I was going to say, as Luke mentioned, patrons can come in and out at any point during the, during the exhibition so they, they may or may not see every part of the exhibition. The exhibition will be running from normal operating hours, which, Luke, you can correct me.
10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. No one there, and we will make some late opening days up to 11:00 PM.
Are there any of this, I'm sorry, are there, last thing. Are there any of the space that you did that had any other way of closing out the light apart from a wall? Like a rolling curtain or movable panels or doors or something like that?
No, never. We, we need to use panels because it would be more useful. Our intent is to last for at least 10 years, probably more. The idea is to create a permanent destination where people can have the program every year. So the idea is that every year you go to sites to see the new exhibition. So only the panel can give us the, the, the facility to control natural lights and be able to, to have a light barrier for a long time.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, we did look at a lot of different alternatives, including scrims, shades, curtains, and the like. We also looked at other ways of cutting off the light, for instance, by constructing, in essence, a full wall across the south end here to block the light and make this the lit area. None of those really work programmatically, and they are all compromises in terms of the space itself. These panels are not, they're not removable on a day-to-day basis, but the installation has been designed to be very reversible. So the panels will only attach at the jams of the masonry openings. Everything else is attached to, to that metal frame. And when the lease is up for this tenant, those panels can be removed and very minor repairs made to the masonry jams in order to put it back to its original condition.
Okay, thank you. And I have a few more questions, and I'm going to take them in the order in which their hands are raised. So we'll start with Commissioner Devonshire, followed by Commissioner Jefferson, and then Commissioner Chapin. Go ahead, Commissioner Devonshire.
Yeah, my, my fundamental question was...
you know, when, when this circus moves on, what do we do? What provisions have you made about reversibility for areas where you've taken out teller cages, where you've done other essentially substantial removals of original material? Do we know that some of these marbles are, are going to be salvaged? Are the marbles that are being removed going to be replaceable? Are they still available? Could you give us a little information about that, please?
Sure. All, it's indicated on the drawings, but everything that we are removing will be retained and salvaged on site unless it's something that we are reusing. So we are reusing some of the marble to create that return screen on the north sides of the boxes. We do have some of these cap pieces are missing, so we can take those from one area and essentially salvage them in a different area in the banking hall space so that we can, so that we can restore. Everything else, as I said, everything that we are not using will be stored on site. And we have, this is, I think, the, the same approach that has been taken at every other banking hall, certainly that we've worked on so that they, they can be reinstalled or so that we have the material to go out and find the appropriate match to do it. The, the teller counter removals that we're talking about are, I think, quite minimal. Certainly compared to other banking halls and, and, and very typical of what the commission has seen at other banking halls. And they also very much maintain the idea of one side versus the other, the public side versus the private side. And, and we've been very conscious of that.
Yeah, I'm not concerned with minimal. I'm, I'm concerned with replaceable. For example, if you, if you take a three by three piece of stone and you cut it down to make a jam, do we know that that particular stone is available in larger sizes so that this can be reversed in the future?
I think that's something we could look at. Again, I, we have done this at other banking halls. And by maintain, by retaining the material on site, it makes it that much easier to go out and find the new material if, if we need to do that in the future. But I, I think also at many of the banking halls.
At this point, you don't know if, if those stones are available.
No, no, we have not, we, we have not been looking for that. And I do think and, and the chair or Corey can correct me, but at most of the banking halls, these conditions have been maintained for some period of time.
You mean the removals?
Yeah.
For the adaptive reuse of the other banking halls where the commission has approved selective removal of teller cages, teller counters and other fabric to facilitate the new use. Those uses have not reversed at this point. Those uses continue. That as far as I know.
I, I would expect that future tenants would, that, that this would work for future tenants in terms of where, where things are removed and the things that we are doing that are very specific to this use and to the culture spaces program are the things that are very, very reversible for us.
Okay. Is Commissioner Devonshire, do you have any other questions while we're on you? Okay, Commissioner Jefferson, followed by Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I had a question about the check writing desk. Is that place there for equipment or just aesthetic or what's the reason for?
That, that is its historic location.
So it's just an aesthetic? It's an object of the space, that's it?
Yeah. So if you look here, there's this small pedestal right here. And that is the pedestal where the check writing desk has historically been located. It is, it's stored on site in some of the boxes that we saw in some of the photos before and it will be put back to its place of prominence at the center of the banking hall.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, yes, my question is about the exterior. The.
I will, I will go there if you ask a question.
If you would, thank you. Okay, so the, the entrance that you proposed to use is the, I'll say that the, you're, you're proposing to use one main entrance, is that correct? Not, not the actual existing main entrance, but the entrance to the left.
Yes, the, the entrances to the far left and the far right were entrances to the office floors up above and this is the entrance to the banking hall. We are using this as the entrance and this as the exit because it works best in terms of bringing people through the entire exhibit. It also requires minimal modification to either of, particularly on the exterior, either of the entrances. So this will still be functioning and, and this will probably be, you know, they're having special events at night and the like. This would probably be the entrance.
So that was my question. If the, if the entrance was really not going to be the main entrance, but that was going to be an egress, that the signage which is balanced is really not directing the a participant as clearly since you've got another banner and, you know, obviously the two flag poles, which is a, a different issue, but the second banner might actually confuse people as to where the entrance was. Just having a banner or banners next to the primary entrance. But you think you may be using the main entrance sometimes for larger events or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be for special events if there was a catered event at night. Primary access for the visiting public would be through this entrance and that is very, obviously why we are proposing a projecting banner here. The canopy and these two signs. So this sign would really be about hours of operation, ticket prices and the like. This sign would be specific to the exhibition that's ongoing at that moment.
But the additional banner is really just about kind of balancing it on the front or, I mean, or? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith, please go ahead.
I, I had a question about the interior restoration work. Has that been submitted and reviewed by the staff or is that, would that follow or?
No, it has not. We're, right now, we've been working with Evergreen on the scope. The work that I showed you that was done at the very front of the banking hall space, the cleaning and painting and repair, that was approved by staff, specifications submitted probably four or five years ago. Be very similar to the scope and specification that we would be doing at staff level for the entire space.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions at this time? Do a scan looking for hands. Okay, not seeing any questions right now. We will turn to public testimony. Lisa, do we have anyone waiting to testify on this item?
We do. We have two people that signed up to speak. First, Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. Hi Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes. This is Kelly Carroll. Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. Adaptive reuse is a tenant of historic preservation, a testament to historic buildings versatility, which adds incalculable vibrancy to our city. At the former Immigrant Savings Bank, an interior landmark will once again be made regularly accessible to the public, which is a net positive. HTC appreciates the clear presentation from the applicant, which explains the programmatic need for the proposed changes. Unlike other modifications to interior landmarks that the commission has considered in the past, this tenant makes a case for their needs as opposed to cursory removals when there is no lease holder at the time of submission. The proposed program relies heavily on audiovisual equipment, surface mounted speakers and subwoofers, projectors and an extensive trust system for spotlighting architectural features. HTC asks that the commission ensure that all of this equipment be mounted within the interior landmark as delicately as possible, avoiding penetrations into the stone. A sensitive approach will ensure that when and if the tenant departs this space, the architecture will not be irreversely, irreversibly punctured. We ask that the same rationale be applied in considering the multitude of exterior light fixtures. In reviewing the Chambers Street proposed signage program, HTC consistently advocates for a less is more approach. The former Immigrant Savings Bank is a bold, bizarre skyscraper and the architecture speaks for itself. There is historic precedent for the grandly scaled flag poles and HTC finds flags in this location to be appropriate. The proposed four signs at pedestrian level should be removed as they are visually interruptive to the base of the building and can be placed inside the vestibule of what will be the main entrance. Both canopies should also be eliminated from the secondary entrances to further clean up this facade. If there is concern about wayfinding to the proposed entry, the proposed large banner sign that's projecting could easily be modified to communicate the westerly doorway as the entry point. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we'll be calling in Mark Bench, Victorian Society. Okay, Mark Bench, can you hear me? Mark Bench, can you hear me? Mark, can you hear me? Mark, can you hear me?
Can.
We've brought you in.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to testify? Mark, can you please state your name for the record and then you have three minutes to testify?
Do you think we lost him?
Well, I see him here and he's not muted. Mark, if you, listening to YouTube, you're on a delay, so you could just turn off the YouTube and you can start speaking. Oh, I, Mark, I think we hear you.
Can you? Good. Is that good?
Yeah, and.
Good.
Yes. To the record and you have three minutes.
Absolutely. Mark, Mark Bench for. My.
Why don't you, I think if you're listening to YouTube, there's a delay and it may be confusing you. So turn off the YouTube right now and you're in our meeting, so you should be able to go ahead and speak and hear yourself in the meeting.
I, I, I understand. Yep. Shit. Okay, yes, is that better? I'm sorry.
Yes, we, yes, please just read your testimony. We can hear you perfectly. Everything you say.
Mark Bench for on behalf of the preservation. Oh, steer. Okay. So Mark Bench for, for on behalf of the Preservation Committee of the Victorian Society of New York. Founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society of America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation. Oh, this is, this is. Appreciation and preservation of our 19th century heritage as well as the, the early 20th century from 1837 to 1917. Among its other activities in New York chapter actively promotes.
Mark, we're, we're losing time here, so maybe you just want to jump to the main point of your testimony?
Yeah. I understand. The removal of significant amounts of historic stone and metalwork at the interior would cause permanent loss of these protected features. The proposed new architectural elements of a very different style and detail from the historic interior will alter the character of the space, obscure historic features and call and do attention to themselves, thus diminishing the architectural and historic character of the interior. The covering up of the vast windows, besides obscuring them, will significantly change the perception of the space by preventing natural light from flooding the interior. And the proposed light projections will essentially destroy the, the perception of the space. We understand that, that the commission may not believe it is able to regulate the projection of light, either through the windows or into the interior, but the commission, commission certainly can regulate the physical alterations and hardware that are required to accomplish these things. The extensive light and sound hardware will be highly visible in the installation destructive of the physical fabric of the interior. Concerning the proposed exterior, the photographs on pages 11 and 12 of the 85-page application show what a truly extraordinary facade this is, sedate yet bold and powerful, elegant and symmetrical. The over-the-top proposal for flags, banners, canopies and signs throws that whole out of balance and severely diminishes its architectural integrity. We note that there are two large flag poles above the ground floor, not original but old. They provide ample opportunity for advertising activity within and one of them, being almost directly over the proposed main entrance to the facility, could easily denote, "Enter here." We urge the commission to reject this proposal or require substantial design. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And with that, that is everybody that has signed up to speak and that is in the waiting room.
Thank you. Rich, do we have any written testimony or any resolution from the community board?
Yes, so we have written testimony, but none that has not already been spoken of and Manhattan Community Board one recommending approval.
Approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, would you or, or, or the other applicant team members like to respond to the comments?
Sure. So I think, I'm very appreciative that HTC gets it, that this application is really about making an accessible space and making one of these very few individual landmarks truly publicly accessible. Most of the removals that we are talking about are very clearly consistent with how the commission has approached similar banking halls in the past. We are being very selective in the amount of removal that we're doing and it's really intended to provide circulation through. The interventions that we're proposing that are really related to the culture spaces program are the ones that are the most highly reversible. The boxes that we're proposing, they're designed to be very, very simple. Intentionally so as not to detract from the space itself, but also because then it gives a very plain surface onto which we can project our program. The equipment that we're proposing on the interior, 80 to 90% of it is attached above that cornice level through flat plaster. It will not damage any decorative features. None of the attachments or equipment or other stuff that we are talking about related to the culture spaces program has an impact on the decorative fabric and any penetrations that we're making through masonry joints and the like would be reversible when this program is removed. Obviously, as I mentioned and as Luke. Obviously, as I mentioned and as Luke mentioned, the lighting control is what makes the entire program possible. So we have spent a lot of time working on that, thinking through options. Do we put a wall here? Do we put a wall there? The boxes were one of the primary ways of achieving that. The other way of achieving that is the panels on the windows themselves. We're very happy and very open to discussing any kind of agreement, whatever it might be, so that when this lease runs up, those panels would be removed and not there in the future. We've had some preliminary discussions with staff about that, and we're very open to something like that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Please raise your hand if you have any final questions. Okay, not seeing any questions. I think we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion, so. I'm working on unmuting people, so accept that if you see it. Okay. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Lutfee, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to move into our discussion, and I think just to help frame the discussion, commissioners, it might be good for you all to think of this sort of in kind of three buckets. One would be the exterior. Whoops, and I think, let's just mute everybody again because I'm hearing some feedback. One would be the exterior, which would include the signs flanking the entrance, the five banners, two at flagpoles, two in windows, and one adjacent to the entrance, the illuminated canopy at the western entrance, and then changes to the doors, including dropping two windows, four windows, I think, to create two egress doors on Reed Street and removing one revolving door, but keeping the drum on Chambers Street. And then, as we move to the interior, I think you can think of this sort of in two buckets, the removals and then the installations. And so the removals, I think, as we've heard, much of the fabric is to be either reused or retained on site, but it includes the large masonry, a large opening in the marble for the ticket opening into the ticketing room, dropping sills at three teller cages at two locations adjacent to those spaces at the north, as it was described, the north exit lead into the non-designated spaces, and removing four areas of teller cages, three on each of the sides, the east and west sides, and two on each end, sorry, two at the northern end. On each side of the northern end. And then the installations, which as we've heard are also mostly reversible with some minor repairs needed, and those include the gypsum board enclosures and mezzanine. Two of those enclosures are inside of the designated spaces, the ticketing counter and area and the gift shop. The others are outside of the, technically outside of the designated space, but visible within the entire space. The window coverings, the truss in the plain plaster above the cornice, and then the equipment, including speakers, projectors, light fixtures, mostly attached to the truss, but some attached to the columns as well. So that might help frame the discussion to focus on the five components of the exterior, the three components of removals on the interior, and the four areas of new installations on the interior. So with that, I'm going to start. Why don't we start with Commissioner Shamir Baron? Would you go ahead?
Yes, thank you. What an interesting project this is. I'm, I'm, I, I think that the methodology of these culture spaces in projecting full surfaces is just especially poignant for us today. This is slightly aside from the kind of the preservation discussion, but I think it's fascinating because we are all today experiencing this life of watching TV, you know, all day on these, like, on these tiny screens or slightly bigger screens. And the idea of kind of whatever the next reality is going to be of kind of much more immersive, immersive two-dimensionality is fascinating and, and I think really important that. The next question of what, you know, public and private will be, what interior and exterior be given our curtain conditions, is it fascinating to think about too? So I'm, I'm really excited about this as a, as a as a kind of a response to, to many things, the integration of technology and sort of real life and the possibilities that it opens. But I also am left with a little bit of trouble about the following. One would think that if you could, if you do this, if you employ this method, that on some level, it wouldn't matter what was, sort of what was there. You'd have, you know, the premise would be, we don't have to change anything at all because the superimposition of these, of these projected images will be able to take care of the, the changes to experience, to circulation even. So then that leaves the question of the light and how it is one manages the light, because that seems to be a critical piece. So that's on one hand. And then the other issue is that the question of what these designated interiors are left with in the, in the, what we are left with in those moments and periods of times when the projection is not up. So what, how do we experience those landmarked windows or the parts of the landmark that are designated, those windows, their depth, their, their light, their materiality? And how do we experience these things that are not really exactly pieces of furniture, but are these plain walls and boxes, as you call them? And I think we don't experience them very well as they are presented at this moment, or like, or they're not, or, you know, do they detract from the experience of the, of the interior landmark? And I would say maybe not generally. So I'm not so concerned with the removal of material. So in terms of the outside, I think the, the approach to the entries and the wayfinding and the flags, all of it is acceptable to me and appropriate. Next, the question of removal of material on the teller stations, less problematic because, again, kept in, on site and potentially reversible. Three, the masking of the windows with panels that are forward of the, of the depth that exists now, I think, is, is a problem. It detracts from the experience of the interior space for the, for the, for as far a future as we can imagine, even if it is reversible. And I would say almost the same with the boxes, but those actually act a little bit more like furniture, so I can accept them. So my question is, can, and my, my sort of solution would be, can you mask with film the glass panels? Can you make, do what Commissioner Goldblum asked, you know, make systems that are a little bit more film-like, fabric-like, operable, and changeable in, in real time? But otherwise, I'm, I'm very excited about this, and I think it's, it opens up a lot of interesting possibilities and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford-Smith?
Muted. Sorry. Okay, I, this is a very staying proposal, and I welcome the public use of the space. My firm did restoration of this building 20 years ago. So it's, you know, when I'm walking through that lobby, I know how it had gotten. So this would be really amazing to see this transformation, but I am troubled by a few things. I think I'm most troubled by, I guess, not so much the removal, the interior fabric, but the reusing of it, actually, I think. Commissioner Devonshire had alluded to in his questions. If you take the teller windows and you cut them down, and then you reuse that marble to make the returns or to basically put a screen where it never was, as shown in this image that's up right now. I'm not sure how reversible, you know, that will be, and we're trying to reuse that to put the teller counters back to where they were. Also, I think that using that material to reconfigure the teller is not what the original space was, and I think that should be a different, different material, a different expression, and so that you can really see what was removed and what is basically a new invention. I'm not so troubled by the boxes. I think that, that they will recede. And I think that the technology that's been incorporated has been done in a positive way. But I also agree with the concern about the windows. I think that, that, you know, what they're proposing right now, when the room is viewed without the artwork, will get very false appearance of the, of the space without being able to see the actual windows. So I'd like them to look at that. And on the exterior, I don't have any issues with the modifications on Reed Street or the canopy on the entrance, but I do think that there's excessive amount of signage. And I think that the, the banner sign that's added at the entrance to 51 and that large sign that's below the window banner next to that entrance is, is just a little bit too much, and they could eliminate those two. Those are basically my, my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
This is an exciting proposal because conceptually, I think, reusing the space in this way to highlight art is great use. I was initially concerned because it's such a beautiful space that you would not be able, really be seeing the space, but they have planned in a period of time during a presentation when the space, the space will be seen not entirely as it was, but, but mainly as it was. So I'm comfortable with that, with the use in general and the way it's, it's being approached. I think that the removals, I have the concern that some of the other commissioners have expressed already about the reversibility or the replacement of particularly the marble elements. And I think that Commissioner Holford-Smith's remark about reusing it in a way that was never used is perhaps not the right approach, that an approach could be taken, which is a different approach to that. I do think that the, most of the elements of the, just enclosures, they're simple and reversible, and I don't really have a problem with the, those elements that are being included, the enclosures. The I have some concern about the removal, the removals necessary for the teller windows. Again, can, can those elements, if, if things need to be changed in the future, will there be marble that can, or material that can be used to match what's being removed? Not, it's not marble at that point, I think, but what, what is, needs to be, is there, is there, is it available? Is the material available? So that if they, I'd like the advocate to check on that. And the flagpole, the, the exterior, I think that flagpoles are, are okay to use. I think that there are too many banners, and they should have a banner just right over the entrance. At one banner, that's the large banner instead of a side banner as well, because if you put it over the entrance, I think you no longer need the side banner if you don't have an additional banner. And I also have a concern about the large sign that is on the actual building exterior because it interrupts the facade in a way that I think is somewhat unfortunate. But I'm okay with a canopy over that entrance and the signage which is going to address what's in the facility, which is on, on both sides of the primary entrance. The Reed Street side, I think that the interventions that are happening there are, I can support those interventions. I think I've covered most.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Goldblum? Let me see, where are you? Here we go, you're unmuted.
Thank you. I agree with almost everything everyone has been saying. It's a really interesting project, but it, it really poses some significant challenges for an interior landmark. I mean, I'm trying to think about what it's, what it's like, what, you know, how to, how to treat it in a, in a way that's meant for it with other interior landmark situations. I think the focus on the windows is appropriate because kind of like manufacturer's handover bank, you have a building that's, that's exterior and interior landmark, where you have huge windows that are right on the street. And yes, today, when the building is, when the space is empty, it's relatively dark. But I think where the, where the space is occupied by anybody at any time, it would be quite a bit more animated than the image shown on the screen. And certainly, you know, in the wintertime, when the sun sets early, you know, you're going to be seeing into an illuminated space. So by blanking off the windows 100%, 100% of the time, sheetrock, even if it is painted with a faux finish, I think that's an awfully remarkable and unusual incursion into a interior and exterior landmark. I, I just, I just have a very hard time with that. The funny thing about the space is that it's really a movie theater, right? It's, and it's such a movie theater, wants to be a black box. Nowadays, theaters are plain old sheetrock wallpaper things with very little distinguishing qualities on the interior. They used to be quite different. They used to look quite a bit like this banking hall. But, and the funny thing about this application is that it's both in its restoration elements, celebrating and playing on the bozart quality of the interior by using it as a kind of imperfect but charismatic projection screen. And then for the new incursions, making it like a kind of contemporary movie theater where everything is flat, everything is sheetrock, the millions are painted on. It just seems like the level of incursion, you know, so I think our role is to really look at this as if the, the, the projection were turned off. You know, we otherwise it would, I mean, I think that's the way we would look at any interior landmark is.
Yes, that's right.
You're looking at it as a space, not as a space being used as a screen. So from that point of view, this view, for instance, shows, you know, the very visible mezzanine. I don't think that, I know when we dealt, when we did interventions a long time ago into the Bowery Savings Bank building, we certainly didn't approve this degree of visibility of relatively unadorned utilitarian structure in a, you know, at the focal point, at the axial focal point of a major banking hall. So I think that the incursions have to really be looked at as architecture, as if the lights are on, and not as just kind of vanilla background that you really are not supposed to look at because they're going to be covered with images of clint. So I, I think that, that I don't think that it's inappropriate to put any of the interior additions where they've been placed. I don't think their scale is inappropriate, but I think that their architecture has to be examined from the point of view of what does it look like when the lights are turned on? And in terms of the window scrims, I'm, I'm looking on my, my little tablet here. Blackout smart glass is available where you can put a film on the glass and it covers up almost 100% of the the light when you turn it on, and when you turn it off, it's more or less clear. And I'm sure there are other solutions that are available that wouldn't box out and permanently structurally obstruct. structurally obstruct windows. And the last thing about the interior that I would say is, I think the revolving doors should remain symmetrical. If they're going to remove one set in that vestibule, it should be the center set, not the side set. So symmetry should be preserved there. Oh, and lastly, on the interior, in terms of the removals, I'm actually okay with what they did in the center of the space, although I hear Anne's point and I think it's well taken. I would certainly agree if they wanted to go in the direction that Anne proposed. My bigger concern is those two front bays, each three bays wide on either side of the entrance. I think that those, since they are normally visible from, you know, they're kind of what you're supposed to see first. I would ask that only one of the three bays be cut down to a doorway, leave the other two on either side as existing, where you still see the grills and where, you know, so you can have access, but it's not a blowout. On the exterior, I think that the West banner that was talked about by others is should be removed. I think that the stretch panel to the east of the entrance, six foot 10 inch dimension here should be removed. And I think that the lettering on the front of the canopy should be removed as well. I think one of the things that is acceptable about the canopy to the east, that it's very simple. And by putting all this text on it, I think it gets to be a little bit much. I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Michael Devonshire, let's make sure you're unmuted here. Okay, please go ahead, Michael Devonshire.
I agree completely with everything that Anne said. And my chief concern, as well as Commissioner Goldblum pointed out, is what do we have when the Clint pictures are not showing? We have this designated space and I think we need to as much as we can retain that visage for people who are entering this space. And to me, the greatest problem is the windows on the Chambers Street side. How do we treat that? And apparently there are different ways to treat it, not just sheet rock that's painted. And I think we should pay some attention to that. But otherwise, I agree with the exterior signage comments and that's about it.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Chen, please go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I agree almost everything that all the commissioners have said. Obviously, the reversibility of the material is a concern, I think, like most. I also agree with Anne and Michael Devonshire about their comments. I have less problem with the canopies, but I do share some of the concern about those two panels on the exterior. I do agree that the treatment can be done better. I have less problem with the Reed Street, but my architectural school special project was lighting projections. So I'm very excited to see what the lighting might look like when this project goes ahead. However, I am concerned about, you know, whenever we're facing with these beautiful former interiors, the resulting reallocation of those existing with the bank tellers or the partitions or the desks usually is less than satisfying. So I'm hoping in this case that the applicant can really safeguard this as though this is a family treasure as much as possible. Do not damage it. Try to preserve it as much as possible and reuse it in as delicate a balance as possible. Other than that, I look forward to seeing this project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland? Sorry. Please go ahead.
All right. These great banking halls that have been landmarked over the last 20 plus years have been mostly saved by the extraordinary amount of events that New Yorkers seem to be able to host. And one wonders and hopes that that all returns, of course. But even there, I suppose there's just a glut of too many events spaces. So it's good to see something like this, a new way of thinking about an extraordinary interior space being used. I share many of the comments. I think that most of them have been said already, but let me quickly summarize my thoughts as well. On the interior, two things, primarily the windows. I don't need to go in and try to solve it. I think that's, that's the job of the applicant. But what we're being shown here is not appropriate and it's been said, it's thin, it's sheet rock, it has to be something else that works to provide the diminution of light that you need. Secondly, the idea of reversibility. I think Anne first said it, others have agreed that the items removed should be stored, numbered, absolutely being replaced down to a three by three inch piece of marble. If it's being removed, then it has to be labeled and be able to put back in that very spot as a Dutchman later, if necessary, but not reused. Other ways of finishing off spaces that need to be finished, but not the use of original material. So those are my comments on the inside. On the outside, there's just too much stuff. And I think it's been suggested, but different people have said different things. My solution, I think, would be to eliminate the big banner on the west. Put one stretch fabric banner across the windows on the west, right above the door. Allow the canopy with signage to say what it is. I think it's discreet. Eliminate the second stretch banner on the east altogether and allow the banners, the large banners on the flagpoles to be used for identification of this use. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi? And let me just make sure you're unmuted here. Okay, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I, I agree with so much of what has been said. Number one, it is always wonderful to see these incredible bank floors being reused and for the most part, being kept intact in a way that they can be celebrated. And it's, it's a nice relief, actually, that part of the program here is going to be 15 minutes where there is no video. So that people, visitors who come in will get a sense of the beauty and grandeur of the space. I do, I'm going to start on the outside and then work in. And a lot of what I'm going to just point out quickly have, has been said, but you know, there might be a few tweaks. One thing that no one has really talked about that much is the lighting. And I do want to say that it does seem a little excessive to me. You know, this, this is an absolutely beautiful building, but it's kind of being used as a cultural, the base, as a cultural institution. And most of our cultural institutions are very modestly lit. And I think it would be great for the applicants to go back and look at how they could, might take this down a bit. And in so doing, I think it will help preserve incursions into the facade. I do think the entry canopy is very well done and nicely lit. And it's, it brings just enough attention to the entrance. However, we may need a little more, not the one right above it, but I believe that the end, the flagpole sign to the west is, would be a perfect form of identification and possibly, if necessary, entry. I don't think the other flagpole banner is necessary. And we, there may need to be a stretch banner, I agree with Fred, across the front somewhere, just as a means of identification. I think these two banners that are installed in the windows make sense in terms of of identifying what's going on inside. And then as you move inside, I think everybody has said this and I kind of, I liked what Commissioner Goldblum said, do, it is really important to think about what some of, what the space is going to look like when the lights are on. And as such, some of the I'm going to say changes that have been made, and even though they're reversible, I think that it's important for some of them to look good in a space that is architecturally significant and grand. So I am concerned about the windows being covered with whatever material that on with the painted on mountains. I definitely feel like it needs to be looked at. I'm also concerned about that box that feels like it's just sheet rock. It looks like it in this, in the in the images that we've seen here that have just been thrown together with sheetrock thrown together and could look a little better. I'm not so concerned about the taking out the teller spaces where they've been taken out because I think it's very important for circulation within the space. That is what's going to be going on here programmatically on, on two levels. So if we tell a booth's intact, I think that would constrain circulation and exploration of what the programming would be. That said, I'm, I am completely on board with the idea of not only retaining what's been taken out, but thinking about at some point, should it ever go back in? What, what materials are there that, or can we get, or can be secured to make sure that happens in a, in an appropriate way? The lighting and all the electronics and wiring seems to be installed in a very discreet way, and I really appreciate that. And you know, the funny thing about that stairway and the, and the railing in in the mezzanine level is, even though I do agree, it doesn't completely doesn't really go with the architecture. It doesn't really offend me because it doesn't get in the way of it. And I feel that way about the downstairs railings as, as well, in the convenience staircase. I do, I forgot about, I forgot about the, what's going on on Reed Street, but I'm completely okay with it. And overall, you know, I think this is a terrific project.
That's great. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
This is a special transformation of an architectural space through graphics, which I think it's through through projections, and I think it's wonderful. My, my concerns are, well, most of my concerns have been covered by the other commissioners, but I have two. One is the boxes that were added. They're all sheet rock. If the materiality of that changed, with once there was not a show, but the materiality was changed, it would add to the interior space. And two, ironic to me is the, if you go to the front facade of the building, the entry, is it the exterior facade, this is such a beautiful, big entrance to this building. And instead of using that as the entry to this new program, program activity, they're using the smaller space. And like, I find that ironic, but maybe that's okay. The, there's too many signage, I think, but I agree with what the other commissioner said.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, please go ahead.
Yeah, everything I think has been said. I just want to note a couple of things. I know it's, it can sound to the applicant and to the tenant as negative, but I think everything that we are pointing out here, it can be fixed and it's a very achievable project. For example, you know, we talk about the exterior signage, et cetera. That's easily fixed. You know, the windows treated in the wrong way. Well, there's other ways to do it. You know, the boxes and balconies, you know, there are other materials that can be used. So I just want to make sure that there is a, some sort of, you know, positive tone to all this because I think it can be done. The only footnote I would add to this is that we should always remember that in these individual interior, sorry, interior landmarks, we always mention this reversibility, reversibility, reversibility. In my short time, I have yet to see anything reversed. And, and that's the thing, you know, when we take out these teller booths, the next application, I assure you, is not going to be, you know, five years from now to put the teller booths back in place. It's going to be, now we've lost 10 out of 30 or something like that this time around. The next one's going to be to remove 10 more. That's, that's, that's just the way it works. So reversible, I understand we need to do, we want, we want that to be true, but just, we should always keep in mind that, you know, once it's out, there's a very, very, very small chance it's ever coming back. That's it.
Great, thank you. All right. So thank you, commissioners, for all of your thoughtful comments and being able to sort of unpack this project that has a lot of small parts, but has a cumulative kind of real positive for the space. And I think that everyone has expressed a lot of support for it conceptually and the idea of allowing the public back into this space to experience this designated interior, I think, is seen as a positive. Adaptive reuse of banking halls has always been supported by the commission and I think our commissioners today agree that that's a very important tenet of preservation, as the Historic District Council said. So I do want to reinforce what Commissioner Gustafson said. This is, there's a lot of positive here. And I think that the commissioners are very excited. It's what I heard in the comments, that there's a lot of excitement to see this project come through. And I think that there are just about four areas that really need to be rethought. One is to rethink the window coverings. I think almost everybody felt that there should be a different plan for that to reduce the amount of signage. And we heard different suggestions, but we'll leave it up to you to kind of think of the cumulative effect and how to address that comment, those comments. To rethink the removal slash reuse plan of materials along some of the comments that we heard, particularly from Commissioner Horford Smith and Commissioner Devonshire and others about sort of removing, storing, labeling and saving the, the pieces that are to be removed and reuse and to use new materials where you need to do finish ends. And, and I think some explanation of research you've done into sourcing would be helpful as well. And finally, there were a number of comments on the design of the boxes. I think many commissioners felt that the simple plain boxes and mezzanine would recede from view. But many others felt that the quality of material and or design should be commensurate with the designated space. So that may be, you know, a material choice, or it may be design, and we'll leave that to you as well. So I think if you, we won't take an action today. And as Commissioner Gustafson said, I think these four areas that need a little bit more study are all very achievable and will support the proposal to adaptively reuse this space. So we'll take no action and we'll see you again soon. And with that, we're going to break for lunch and we will come back at 1:30. So commissioners, just turn your video camera and sound off and we will, when you come back, turn your video camera back on.